Appreciate everyone's patience. We had a closed session item that we had to get resolution to, or partial resolution to, I guess. So I'm going to call to order the August 8th, 2022 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation actually given by Commissioner Douglas tonight as Commissioner Macy and Commissioner Peruge cannot be with us this evening. So we'll start with the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can, please.
Do not want to thank all of the volunteers who serve on the city's official boards, commissions, and committees. They feed and exercise shelter animals, sell used books, supplement our police officers, honor veterans, promote recycling, preserve our history, interpret and defend our ordinances, and monitor our investments, among other things. They skip dinner, miss soccer games, lose sleep, and use vacation time on our behalf. They sometimes have to mediate between neighbors or choose the best from equally unpopular options. They do this with no reward other than the satisfaction of making our city better, which they do. On behalf of the mayor, the city commission, the staff, and the people of Royal Oak, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a proclamation to turn the town teal. I understand Diane Laza-Heldon is with us?
If you join me up here at this microphone area.
This was as close to teal as I could get. I'm going to put my closet.
So my modern privilege of reading this proclamation, I designate September 2022 ovarian cancer awareness month, Thai Michigan Teal. Whereas Thai Michigan Teal is a statewide campaign designed to promote awareness of ovarian cancer-related symptoms. Whereas teal is a color representing ovarian cancer. Whereas ovarian cancer is a dead risk, we got a lot of cancers in one of the five leading cancer-related deaths among women in the United States. Whereas each year approximately 22,000 women are diagnosed with the disease and 15,000 women will die. And whereas women diagnosed with ovarian cancer have an average five-year survival rate of 45%. And whereas unlike other cancers, there's no early detection test for ovarian cancer and becomes symptoms which are often subtle and mimic other diseases, awareness of symptoms is key to early diagnosis. And whereas Thai Michigan Teal consists of volunteers tying ribbons on trees and signposts providing local businesses and offices with symptom information cards. Whereas Thai Michigan Teal takes place the entire month of September and the city of Royal Oak supports their efforts to educate our residents and all members of the public about ovarian cancer and its symptoms. And now therefore due to resolve, I, Mayor Fournier, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby proclaim September 2022 as ovarian cancer awareness month and will join Thai Michigan Teal with communities across the state and will have teal ribbons tied on trees and signposts and informational cards distributed to local businesses and offices to raise awareness of ovarian cancer and its symptoms. For the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. These new chairs are pretty heavy. Getting an arm workout. Okay, that brings us to number five, the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? We have a motion by Commissioner Dubbuck. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo.
Aye.
Way down there.
All the way down there.
Send your curry or your pigeon. Any discussion on the approval of the agenda? All right, with none. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. And just for the public's information, that's typically where Commissioner Colo sits. We have two members that are absent tonight. He does not suffer from cooties and everybody's pushing him back there. We're just, you know, that's where he typically sits.
Circle, circle, dot, dot. I got that cootie shot.
All right. This brings us to public comment. The city commission values and relies on input from fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is a time set aside for the public to address the city commission on city-related issues, both on the agenda and not. I ask that comments be directed to the city commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. In addition to public comment, there will be one public hearing at tonight's meeting. If you're here to comment on the Michigan Liquor Control Commission License Establishment Public Hearing, Miami Knights LLC Transfer of New Class C License and Approval Plan of Operation, you can actually wait to that time and you'll have another opportunity to speak at that public comment. If you wish to speak tonight at either public comment or at the public hearing, please wait until recognized by me, Mayor Fournier. Please come up to the podium. For the record, we ask that you state your name and address. And please be mindful that we wish to hear from anyone who wants to speak at public comment tonight. So comments are limited to three minutes or less, and we even have a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, please don't hesitate at any time to email or call the city commission with your comments. Please note that typically we don't respond directly to questions at public comment. However, we're taking notes and will address those questions when the agenda topic is discussed or refer to the proper city department if the matter isn't scheduled to be on the agenda. Our deputy city manager is also taking notes and will look into matters as needed. So with that, who's first? Rob?
Good evening, Mayor Fournier, Commissioner Staff. Rob Moore, 1430 West Farnham. I am the chair of the Royal Oak Charter Review Committee. And Commissioner Douglas, I appreciate that serendipitous invocation this evening. So just here, I'd like to provide a brief update on our activities. Very briefly, very briefly for those who are unaware of what the committee is and what we do. We are five citizen volunteers with one city commission representative, currently Commissioner Peruge, who are tasked with an ongoing review of the city charter to bring into compliance with federal and state law and to make it easier to read, easier to understand for all of us non-lawyers. So ordinarily by now, I would have been coming before you with the committee's recommendations for charter amendments for the November ballot. That won't be happening this year, however. Early this year, we were informed at our February meeting that the state attorney general's office, who is the second step after the city commission's approval for November charter amendments, is requesting up to 90 days to review any and all charter amendments. And given the timeline that the committee typically is accustomed to working, that just wasn't doable this year. So we'll make some adjustments, beginning with our next meeting on September 27th, work in earlier timeline, and ideally become a for you late winter, early spring next year with the committee's recommendations, which would then be forwarded on to the state AG's office for their approval. In the meantime, we're going to be continuing some other initiatives. We'll continue to work on community outreach ideas. We've done some excellent work in the past with Judy Davids and Richard Wilson on some PSAs and some write-ups and whatnot, so we'll keep working on that. The city attorney has recommended that we find ways to make the city charter easier to read and understand, more searchable. Currently, the way it's formatted, unless you know exactly what you're looking for, it can be difficult to find provisions in that. So we'll look for ways that can do to do that in compliance with the Home Rule City Act. And hopefully by late, I guess, late winter, early spring, we'll be coming for you with the committee's recommendations. I thank you for your time. If you have any ideas or any questions for me, you know how to get ahold of me, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anybody else wish to speak at public comment tonight? Going once, going twice. All right, we're going to close public comment, bring the meeting up to this side of the table, which brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda this evening? Commissioner Colo.
Item C, please.
C?
As in tree canopy.
Starts with a T.
Canopy.
Okay. Oh, got it. Item C. All right. Anybody else? All right. With none, the consent agenda now consists of claims from the 29th and 29th special pay and August 9th, 2022, approval of purchase orders, and approval of tentative extension agreements with department heads and deputy department heads association, informant supervisors association. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Dubbuck. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so that brings us to item C, approval of tree canopy restoration program purchase order. Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is an approval for a purchase order to buy, what, about 800 trees that would be planted in the city right of ways in parks that have been requested by residents. I see Mr. Filipski here. I was just wondering if you could tell us a little bit about the program. I mean, I know there's a little bit of time left to get involved, so I wanted to make sure everyone had that archery.
I believe there is time. Judy could answer that. Is it filled?
Very little.
Very little. So if anybody wants a tree, we matched out residential trees for this round at 725 so that we could also plant 75 trees throughout parks as well. So we're almost at max. We'd encourage people to sign up if they still want. The good news is we're going to be able to take the sort of infrastructure that we have set up here to facilitate this program and be able to easily apply that in the spring. So all is not lost. We're going to do another one of these programs very quickly. But thanks to Judy and getting the word out, we had a lot of support very quickly, and so the program is popular. We look forward to getting these trees in the ground. I'm really proud of the residents, I would say, for their enthusiasm with this. And while it will immediately provide some aesthetic value to the neighborhoods, the real deal is 15, 20 years from now when it maintains the character of our neighborhoods. So we look forward to this program and another one in the spring.
In your time here, have we had a program this robust of tree, community tree planting?
No, not typically. I mean, by way of example, during average year, 200 to 250 trees. We plant more than that citywide, but at DPS, that's about what our replacement program is. But that number includes trees that were taken down and replaced. So what we're talking about here is 725, well, actually 800, brand-new locations for trees. So more than quadrupled it, or nearly.
That's right. Thank you. And you know, with that, I just, I want to bring that to everyone's attention. This is an amazing program. This is actions that we've taken together, right, you know, through the Climate Action Plan, through a great plan at DPS, through finding funds for it also. So thank you all involved, and with that move of approval, the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Colo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubbuck. Discussion. All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, this brings us to item eight, which is the Michigan Liquor Control Commission License Establishment Requests. I see the wonderful Chief Moore is with us here to kick off with Miami Knights LLC doing business as Miami, 505 South Main Street, public hearing to transfer a new license and approval of a new plan of operation. Chief Moore.
Thank you, Mayor and city commissioners. The Royal Oak Police Department received a request from Miami Knights LLC to review a new proposed plan of operation to be located at 505 South Main Street in the city of Royal Oak. The applicant is transferring ownership of a Class C liquor license from Main and Fifth LLC that's currently in escrow at that location. They plan on doing business as Miami. Miami Knights LLC is solely owned by Jasmine Gillette. The applicant will lease the building from Main and Fifth Ventures for $31,000 per month, and these funds will come from business proceeds of Miami. Miami Knights LLC signed a lease, a five-year lease, and has the option of an additional two five-year leases after that. The liquor license itself was purchased for $1 from Main and Fifth LLC, which is currently in escrow at that location, and part of the lease agreement states that the license will remain with the property and can't be transferred anywhere else in the city. The applicant will spend approximately $310,000 on renovations and an additional $40,000 on new inventory for the business. These funds will come from $300,000 of the applicant's personal savings and the rest from a small business loan. And as you recall, this space was previously two separate spaces that have been combined. It was previously 505 South Main and 108 East Fifth, and it's been combined into a mixed-use two-story building there, a new construction. The applicant's experience has primarily been in the beauty supply business for the past nine years, and she also has a partnership interest in a takeout hookah lounge in the city of Detroit. She does not have any experience operating with a liquor license. Ms. Gillette will run the daily operations with the assistance of a general manager, Mr. Steven Yarborough. He's been active in the hospitality industry for over 20 years, also involving a liquor license in the state of Michigan as well as Arizona. If approved, Miami will operate as a restaurant and a bar, and they're requesting to be open Sunday from 10:00 a.m. till midnight, Monday to Wednesday from noon until midnight, and Thursday to Saturday from noon to 2:00 a.m. They anticipate 60% food to 80, or excuse me, 40% alcohol sales. Total proposed interior seating for this business is 280 patrons. The first floor will have seating for 88 patrons, including 10 seats at a bar, and the second floor will have seating for 148 patrons, including 20 seats at the bar. And this location is also requesting to have an outdoor service area on the rooftop terrace with seating for 44 patrons. And of course, that'll be operated seasonally, following all city policies and procedures. They're not requesting an entertainment permit or a dance permit, however, they are requesting to have an occasional DJ and playing piped or canned music throughout. The police department's findings indicate that they meet the requirements necessary to be granted this request, and the police department is not opposed to this request. Just for a point of reference, I believe the applicant as well as her attorney are here. If you would like any questions at them and when we open up the public hearing for this.
Any questions? I see the applicants. I'm just doing a deduction here. I know all these folks, I assume, are here. You guys are the applicant. We have a lighthouse tonight. Do you guys want to come up? And you're not obligated to, but if you want to tell us a little bit more about the business, field a few questions. Most of us are friendly.
Hi.
I'm Joe Shalow. This is Jasmine Gillette. She's going to be the owner. This is Steven Bacall. He's the representative for the landlord. You know, we're here to take this business and want it very similarly to what was proposed before, American fare, 60-40 between food and beverages, and, you know, hopefully that we be a good citizen for the city of Royal Oak. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Questions? Commissioner Dubbuck.
Sure. I'd just love to hear, you know, from the owner, a little bit about your concept, you know, what?
I'm sorry, I hate speaking publicly.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so yeah, we just want to do like a bar and restaurant, like a lounge type of vibe, and base it off, not like party or anything, but just like Miami cuisine and out-of-town feel. That make sense?
Sure.
Yeah.
She's been very nervous. I'm trying to tell her it's all right. Any other questions? Commissioner Hunt?
Thank you, and good after, or good evening. And I don't want to put you on the spot, I know you're nervous, but I know that you don't necessarily have experience in working with alcohol or liquor licenses, and I know Mr. Yarborough has some experience. Can you explain what your plan is to, you know, get up to speed on making certain that your servers and your workers are compliant with the liquor laws and that you yourself know how to handle liquor?
Can I answer that?
Sure.
Because I'm going to be instructing her what to do as she goes. I'm basically a liquor licensing attorney, and I do a lot of these transactions. And so basically what we're going to do is we're going to enroll every one of the employees in a tips-and-tams training and server training so that they are aware of, you know, all of the specific things that are warning signs as far as, you know, how is a person look like intoxicated? How is a person look like they're underage? How is a person look like they're buying drinks for younger people? That's just one aspect of it. And the other part of it is Mr. Yarborough has enough of the experience to do proper ordering, inventory control, and so forth. As a team, they're going to be perfectly in tune with liquor licensing laws and regulations. And, you know, we're going to provide her with the education through, there's online training that they've done. I think she's already done one herself. And, you know, as she hires the employees, they're going to go through that same online training before they start serving alcohol to the patrons.
Thank you.
So when do you open?
I know it's a loaded question, given, you know, it's a newer building now, I understand, and you got work to do, and contractors are, you know, always hard to find.
Top of the, top of the year.
Top of the year, so like January 1st. It'd be awesome.
We're trying to help them execute as quickly as possible. The right tradesmen, the right guys. COVID obviously had an impact on things. That's why our previous tenant terminated the lease. It was kind of like right in the middle of getting their plans together and so forth. And then as things kind of came back, that's when Jasmine and her husband decided that they want to take over this space. And we're trying our best to execute every single trade we can. Obviously, we just turned in some, what was it, the mechanical plans? We wanted to revise them a little bit. The engineer took a look at it, said he's fine with it. So we're just waiting for approval to get all the work going, and then once we get that and they can start moving full speed.
Okay. You're going to do the outdoor thing as well? I know that, wasn't there a?
Outdoor, we have, it's a trex patio.
Yeah.
There's no railing yet.
Okay.
So we haven't turned in the plans for the railing. We have one that's existing, but I think they want to do it a little differently. And if we have to go with the ones that we turned in, we'll do that. If not, we'll change it.
Okay.
Is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I thought if I remember correctly, over, there's the patio over the bank or something there that?
Yeah, it's in the back of the bank.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Because I remember the previous plans.
Yeah, basically.
Can't remember my password to get an email, but I remember.
If you're, so if you're, if you're looking at vibe, credit union from Main Street, it doesn't come, the patio doesn't come all the way up to the edge of the front.
Right.
It's just, it's kind of halfway, so it's pushed in the back.
Right.
To alleviate some noise from the street and so forth.
I mean, it'll be, I mean, it's good. We love the outdoor dining. We want people to think when they, before they pick a place to go, they want to come to Royal Oak because there's cool places like Miami, right? And also, you know, outdoor dining in the summer. Like, okay, if one place is full, I'll go to the next, and just to always think Royal Oak when it's nice out in the summer.
Absolutely.
So, okay. Oh, great. Good luck.
Thank you.
That's a lot of, you know, it's a lot to get done by January, but, you know, you got a good partner in your landlord, so that should help. Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, welcome to town. Excited for you to come in and build that space. I just have a quick question about the security and then the DJ. Because look at the floor plan, I'm not quite sure where a DJ would go, or what's your idea? What's, what do you want to do when you have a DJ?
This is two floors. The second floor has a lot of seating, and it's a possibility, like someone will have a shower, a small wedding, or some type of event like that where the second floor will be reserved for them, and then they may want a DJ to play music at that time.
So it's not Friday night DJ night?
No, no.
Only specific to events.
Understand. Okay, and then the security question then, too, because, you know, 60-40 is leaning a little bit closer to the bar than, you know, restaurant. What is, what is your security plan? What's, what kind of security personnel are you going to have on site?
That's, that's something that we're going to have to play by ear. We have to, you know, look at the, we're going to comply with all the Royal Oak requirements as far as making sure that there's no noise and people congregating in front of the building. But basically, the security is, they're going to have, you know, a staff of two that will oversee people coming in and out and making sure that the patrons there are safe.
So you have two employees on at all times for security when you're open?
Well, most of them will be at nights, it'll probably be after 5:00. Let's be fair to that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, I'll just add on that. Any questions you have about noise or security, our police department is very, very proactive. They're, they want to see businesses be successful, and they can offer, they've seen things that have worked well and seen things that, you know, doesn't impact your business, but, you know, there's different ways to tackle a problem. And so never hesitate, even if you have an issue, never hesitate to call. I know you're new to Royal Oak, your first business here. They're not out, they'll help you with whatever issue you have and make it right because they don't want to, you know, they want you to be successful.
Actually, we appreciate the police department because they gave us a lot of advice on the plan itself and how to develop it. So we appreciate the police and the lieutenant that was in charge of the project.
We have a wide variety of nightlife here, like people like me that go out to eat at 4:00 because I got kids, and, you know, and then we have folks that stay up to 2:00 in the morning. And every business model, you know, we don't have, I mean, very many issues because, you know, we try to, I won't speak on behalf of the chief, cultivate an open and transparent relationship with all businesses. So if you ever have, like, you know, I'm a little worried about this, or I'm not sure how to do this, they're, they're not going to stop in your way from being successful. They'll just give you tidbits of information to help you. So, and I think our track record in Royal Oak's pretty strong. Okay? Yeah. Wonderful. All right. Anything else for us? Anything else we should know?
Just say welcome, and we'll see you in January.
Yeah, looking forward to it. Looking at a little Miami in the middle of January, I'll tell you.
A lot of people will go there.
All right, well, I'm going to open up the public hearing and see if anybody comes up, and then we'll close the public hearing and then bring it back to this side of the table. So I'm opening up the public hearing. Same rules apply as they do for public comment. Is anyone here to speak at the public hearing this evening? Okay, with none, I'll close the public hearing, bring the discussion up to this side of the table. Any discussion? Any move? Commissioner Dubbuck?
No objection from the police department? A new concept coming to town? I'm moved for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Dubbuck. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt. Discussion on the motion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Unanimous. Good luck. And let us keep a surprise to the grand opening, you know? I promise if you invite Commissioner Colo, Commissioner Dubbuck, I'll, you know, make sure they behave and, you know. But yeah, we're looking forward to it. That's right.
Personal implications.
We look forward to it. It'd be nice.
Thank you guys very much. Thank you.
All right, this brings us up to item B of eight, which is Magical Forks LLC doing business as Imagine, 401 South Lafayette, approval of amended plan of operation. Chief Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, city commissioners. The Royal Oak Police Department received a request from Miami Knights LLC to review a new proposed plan of operation to be located at 505 South Main Street in the city of Royal Oak. The applicant is transferring ownership of a Class C liquor license from Main and Fifth LLC that's currently in escrow at that location. They plan on doing business as Miami. Miami Knights LLC is solely owned by Jasmine Gillette. The applicant will lease the building from Main and Fifth Ventures for $31,000 per month, and these funds will come from business proceeds of Miami. Miami Knights LLC signed a lease, a five-year lease, and has the option of an additional two five-year leases after that. The liquor license itself was purchased for $1 from Main and Fifth LLC, which is currently in escrow at that location, and part of the lease agreement states that the license will remain with the property and can't be transferred anywhere else in the city. The applicant will spend approximately $310,000 on renovations and an additional $40,000 on new inventory for the business. These funds will come from $300,000 of the applicant's personal savings and the rest from a small business loan. And as you'll recall, this space was previously two separate spaces that have been combined. It was previously 505 South Main and 108 East Fifth, and it's been combined into a mixed-use two-story building there, a new construction. The applicant's experience has primarily been in the beauty supply business for the past nine years, and she also has a partnership interest in a takeout hookah lounge in the city of Detroit. She does not have any experience operating with a liquor license. Ms. Gillette will run the daily operations with the assistance of a general manager, Mr. Stephen Yarborough. He's been active in the hospitality industry for over 20 years, also involving a liquor license in the state of Michigan as well as Arizona. If approved, Miami will operate as a restaurant and a bar, and they're requesting to be open Sunday from 10:00 a.m. till midnight, Monday to Wednesday from noon until midnight, and Thursday to Saturday from noon to 2:00 a.m. They anticipate 60% food to 80, or excuse me, 40% alcohol sales. Total proposed interior seating for this business is 280 patrons. The first floor will have seating for 88 patrons, including 10 seats at a bar, and the second floor will have seating for 148 patrons, including 20 seats at the bar. And this location is also requesting to have an outdoor service area on the rooftop terrace A lot of them, we were, a majority of business walkthroughs, proactive business checks that the police officers are expected to do in the downtown area. A couple of them, we were directly pertaining to staff themselves as far as like civil issues or things like that. But we didn't have a number of requests, calls for service for disorderly persons, unruly fights, any, any of the public nuisance crimes that are sometimes associated with establishments.
You say you did not?
We did not.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dubbuck.
Sure, I'm not sure if this is one the chief can answer, if this is for the petitioners' representation. Going to 2:00 a.m. seven nights a week, I'm wondering, is that for flexibility? Or is that a change in the business model? I understand. I've been, and it's a wonderful establishment. It's right now kind of fine dining, which I don't know that folks associate with the 11 to 2:00 a.m. hour. So I'm just curious if that's a change in atmosphere or just flexibility.
Sure. Thank you, Chief Moore. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission, Patrick Howe, Matthew Appicant. I'm sorry, Chef Omar Mitchell could not be here tonight. This request is twofold. One is a follow-up on the commission's approval of stairway, which has been approved to operate in the second floor. So this will allow them to move forward and remove us as the operator on the second floor. The other is a request for demand from clients for private parties earlier in the week. So corporate events and that type of thing. They currently are approved to operate till 2:00 a.m. on Thursday through Sunday, and they would like to have the flexibility to do that during the week. So really not a change to their main core fine dining experience, just ability to stay open later on the early part of the week. So we think that the two concepts will work well together. We still have the right under the concession agreement in the file to operate, you know, private parties, showers, family gatherings on the second floor through a concession agreement where we would provide the food on the second floor and stairway would provide the alcohol. So it's kind of, took us a while to get there, but it's, should have a real nice active building when it's all said and open.
Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm not sure this is for counsel of the chief here, but I, our call was approved to Imagine Eight originally. We talked about that second floor a good amount. We talked about the music coming out of it. And at the time, it was decided that if there were to ever be a party, a DJ, or music up there, the windows would remain shut to keep the music inside and not outside going into that neighborhood subdivision. I just want to make sure that with any amendment here, those provisions that we already put in place are still applied. If Imagine Eight does host an event upstairs, we still have those same restrictions that we put in place back in 2021.
Yes, our understanding that we'd be operating under their January 2022 plan of operation. So that was approved. And so we would be essentially a guest of their serving food in their establishment for our function. So those restrictions that apply to stairway would apply to us if we're operating there.
Okay.
They would also manage and operate the patio on the second floor. So we have no control over that anymore.
All right. Well, I don't think we have any other questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, withstanding any questions, are there any motions? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'll move approval of the revised business plan.
We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubbuck. Discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Thank you. This brings us to our final item on tonight's agenda, which is the proposed ordinance keeping of non-domestic animals in residential areas, second reading. Hi.
Hi. Good evening. How are you guys?
You know, doing all right.
It's coming for you, gentlemen. We're back. We're back. So this is for the...
This is going to be wild.
Okay. This is for the second reading for our non-domestic animals ordinance. So I'm not going to go too far into detail here because we've discussed this quite a bit in the past few meetings. So just a couple of quick notes on this. There were a couple of quick revisions that were requested, mostly due to formatting. And so we've, we've addressed those in this draft. One quick note, this was a little bit different, so I apologize. I forgot the fees and the resolution. So we do need to address the fees, which staff are recommending just to be similar to our licensing fee at $14 for the clerk's licensing part, which comes into play with the exemption. And then the registration process, if an animal becomes a dangerous or potentially dangerous animal, would be $200, which is what it is for dangerous or potentially dangerous dogs. So similar fees for similar processes. So we're, we're requesting that get added into the resolution as a starting point. And then it would come up with the fee schedule in the future where you all would see it at that point and be able to review it there.
So the request would be to approve it on second reading with the addition of the fee schedule as presented by Ms. Barkman.
With the, with the fees is a part of the resolution, not the ordinance.
It's part of the resolution.
Yes, so the, in the ordinance, we specify that it will go to the fee schedule. That is a way that it just makes it a little bit easier.
Because we'd have the ordinance without these added to the fee schedule. So we have to have a resolution to add it to the fee.
Yes.
Got it.
It's a little fire points when you're starting out. But then it gets added, and then it just comes up with that fee scheduling annually.
All right. Questions?
I have no questions.
No questions?
I mean, you're really the main attraction down there, Chris Nicole. There's not much else to look at on this side of the table. I get a little bit of Todd, but it's mostly you, Brad.
This is your chance to look our way for a change.
I know.
I'll do scare skulls.
Anything? Commissioner Dubbuck.
Yeah, so I can't remember if we got into this. I don't want to nitpick the ordinance. It's fine. As far as the folks that are going to need to register those animals that will, going forward, not be allowed in the city, do we have a communications plan?
Yes, we're working on that. So a part of that will be, one, the ordinance has been noticed as required. Then we'll be doing some social media pushes and the Friday e-blast. We'll be adding the information to the website and developing a specific page for that. And then also, we'll probably look at doing some outreach with either local vets who might be caring for those animals.
Good idea.
Because the biggest thing with the exemption is you only have 120 days to do it. And so we want to encourage folks to come in and register during that time. And then maybe some landlords as well. And it was through the animal shelter as well. So we can't hit every single house, but, you know, landlords are a good place to start to.
I know that, you know, we've communicated important information via inserts in the water bill before.
That'd be great.
And 120 days would give us three cycles, so we should be able to hit everybody. So that might be a nice touch to make sure that everyone's had a chance to, you know, be compliant.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Dubbuck.
I'll move for approval.
Second. Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Colo. So that approval of the second reading, correct?
Correct.
Right now, all I see is that I have the resolution. So we have a resolution here approves the city ordinance. So do you want to, part of your motion was to also update the resolution to include the recommended fees to go into the fee schedule as presented by Ms. Barkman.
I misunderstood. I thought we had to do that by separate motion. Can we do that now and adopt the fee schedule?
Well, the resolution adopts the ordinance, but in the resolution, you could also add the fee schedule and adopt the ordinance. Correct?
Yes, you would add another, after the first be resolved, it would be, be further resolved, and then the fees.
Yeah, so my motion is to adopt on second reading with the addition of the fee schedules recommended.
And that's what you understood too, Commissioner Colo?
I guess.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion on the table. Discussion. All right. Oh, barely some discussion. Commissioner Dubbuck.
Just want to thank you again for the work that went into this. I know it's been a winding road. I think we've landed on reasonable policy that is getting it what we want to accomplish here without being overly burdensome. So it was a tough needle to thread. So thank you for your work on this.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Definitely a beast of a thing to work on. No, really, I just want to echo that. I don't, I mean, really, nice work. Listening and watching the replay of the meetings, I mean, it's hard being here. Let alone watching the video again. That's even, you know, more dedication than I think any of us could have imagined. And, you know, appreciate it. And I think we have a pretty solid ordinance here, and I think you took the feedback from this commission. You came with a piece of clay. So yep, we're going to sculpt it. We're going to have to move it. And I think it's a good, good benchmark for other stuff we do. You know, give us a piece of clay to work on, take our feedback, come back, and eventually get it. Bless you. Was that a seize? Okay, false alert. Okay.
All right, so with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. So notwithstanding any more dad jokes, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So will.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Motion done. Well, we got it. I was going to go into the history of Royal Oak version one.
What happens? Do we have to stay here all night?
I think we do.
Move it up and leave the table before the vote.
Any discussion on the motion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We're adjourned.
40 minutes. That, that could be a new record.
I'm not going to have it next week.
Ooh, next week we've got some fun agenda items. Even with me pulling something off like your...